Today, February 5th, and I'd like to welcome you all to council tonight. Before we begin our formal agenda, I would like to recognize that we have several special guests here tonight. We do have Boy Scout Troop 53 who's joining us to observe as part of their work on scouting, and we welcome you here. We also have another group that I believe is called People Power, and this represents a group of high school students who have been working together and meeting about democracy issues since last June. There are people from all over our county and the city, too, so we welcome you with us here tonight. Our first item of business is to establish the quorum, and all members of City Council are present this evening. We next would like to amend the agenda, yes?
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to remove ordinance 0218, remove it from the table and bring it forward under other business.
Correct, okay. So, we have a motion to amend the agenda to reflect that, bringing that ordinance from the table, removing it from the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries and the agenda is amended. Thank you. We now have disposition of minutes, and we have had several sessions, those noted for November 20th, December 4th, December 7th, December 11th, January 2nd, January 16th, and January 22nd, 2018. And so I would entertain a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. We do have several items that have come forward. Council members are in receipt of a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. This is out of the Department of Development, and what this is, is for a liquor license for the Thai Paradise. The only change that is occurring with that liquor license is that there is a change in partners. There was one partner, as President listed previously on it. There are now three partners that will be listed on that new liquor license. We also then have a notice of the creation of an affordable Athens City Affordable Housing Commission, and this is the result of the work of former council member Michelle Pappy in concert with Vice President Steve Golding at Ohio University, distributed an affordable housing report last year, and out of that then came the creation of that commission. It was an ordinance that Council Member Fall brought forward late last year. So, there will be several members that will be appointed, one by the university, one by the mayor. There will also be a member of City Council serving on that. But in addition, there will be seven members beyond that, as well as the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Housing Authority. So, the additional seven members would be appointed by City Council, and we are announcing it to the public, so that if there are persons who would be interested in serving on this Affordable Housing Commission, we would welcome you to send in a brief biographical statement or a CV to Debbie Walker, our Clerk of Council. The persons that we're looking for to represent it include persons from neighborhoods, real estate, finance, tenants, senior citizens, and then two at-large members. So, please do let us know if you are interested in serving. And I believe that may be it for my announcements tonight. And Council Member Kotzis, I believe you have a...
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Nisley. As the Athens City School District continues to work on that conversation of developing a new master plan, they have two board meetings that are coming up this month, and I wanted to let everybody know that coming up, actually, they have a special meeting tomorrow night, February 6th, at 6:30 in the evening, and it is going to be at the Athens High School Auditorium. And then their regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on Thursday, February 15th, also same time, same place, 6:30 at the Athens High School Auditorium. And I, of course, invite all public, all members or all citizens to attend. Thank you.
Okay. I did fail to mention, and I would not want, I'd be remiss if I didn't, that the Athens Fire Department has submitted their annual report, and we have a copy of this in our council chambers, if anybody's interested in reading that. And yes, Council Member Kotzis, McGee.
Thank you, President Nisley. I had promised numerous citizens that I would bring up the fact that there's a lot of discontent, as we're all aware, concerning the potholes on State Street, and I just promised them that the mayor would be working on it, and he's fully aware of it. But I also wanted to point out that some citizens have complimented you highly, Mr. Mayor, for the fact that 10 parking spaces have been opened up on the College Green, and I want you to know that your citizens are highly appreciative of that. So, thank you.
And if I may add, Member McGee, thank you for meeting with myself in the Code Office to work through several details and making sure that we can make that happen.
Thank you.
All right. Other council members? Yes, Council Member Butler?
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to acknowledge that I had been approached by a few citizens regarding the challenges that existed during our last snowstorm and the attempts to shovel sidewalks at the same time that, over the course of the few days, that the plows would then throw the snow back onto the sidewalks that had been just removed by those citizens. A number of citizens on the west side, as well as the east side, received warnings about the snow and found it challenging to make sense of it when they had shoveled the snow that fell from the sky, but then had to shovel again after the plows had thrown the snow back onto the sidewalk. So, I know it's a challenge that exists. I appreciate everyone's efforts. I felt that the streets were very navigable, and we were fortunate for that, considering the Level 3 and the amount of snow that we received. But I just wanted to share that with the mayor's office. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or communications from council members? Then we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Patterson?
Usually you go to the...
Oh, I usually go to the...
That's okay. I'll jump in this space. I have a few items to share. February 20th, which is a Tuesday, 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. at the Grover Center atrium is going to be the first meeting to get feedbacks, ideas, input on what we're referring to as the Richland Pedestrian Passageway Project, or RP3 for short. So, again, Grover Center atrium, Tuesday, February 20th, 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. So, please come on out and share your ideas, hear what's going on, hear about the project, but also engage as that moves forward. Speaking of potholes, the list for this week and likely into next week in terms of potholes, East State Street, as everyone's aware, is kind of an ongoing thing to get the potholes fixed or filled. We're putting cold mix in, just to kind of educate anyone who's watching tonight, that cold mix does not as here as well as hot mix. Hot mix can only be obtained from an open asphalt plant. During the winter months, they typically close down. So, we're using the cold patch, East State Street, and then also Richland, Stimson Avenue, Union, and then back around to East State Street again. East State Street is going to be on our target for a while. I will share with council that we did reach out to one of the asphalt manufacturing plants to see if there's a possibility that they would open up for us to be able to put hot mix down, and it's being explored. So, I want council to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Sure. The only other item that I have for tonight is that I typically receive, and council, you may get these as well, the AEP weather alert that comes out, the most recent weather alert for looking at Tuesday evening into Wednesday, and this is in flux, correct? But they're looking at possibly moderate ice, a quarter to half inch possible in our area during that timeframe. So, I just want people to be aware. Again, AEP puts this out, knowing that it could impact your transmission lines or your residential power lines. And that's all I have, President Nisley.
Okay. We'll work our way back here clockwise. We have Treasurer Mary Ann McClure with us this evening, and she has distributed copies of the 2017 interest income report to council members.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just want to draw your attention to the total interest earned of $215,828.30 compared to the 2017 projections of $145,000-plus. The most significant part of the difference is due to her having invested the bond proceeds for the pool project. So, we've been able to earn a fair amount of interest to offset the interest expense that, of course, we're paying on that. And we'll continue to have a little bit of that coming into 2018. And other than that, overall, we've had a half a percent interest increase overall for the year, and hopefully a little bit more this year.
Thank you.
Have any questions for me?
Any other questions from council members? Thank you. Thank you for the good news. Even if it is a half percent, we're grateful. And Law Director Eliason?
No.
Okay, no reports. All right, we'll move on with the ordinances. When we read the ordinances a third time, just as a little bit of background information, that's usually the time at which we vote on them. Then we'll also have readings for, second readings for some of our ordinances. Many times, what we do on that second reading is only read the title. There will be a few of them tonight where we will be suspending the rules because we have deadlines for bills that are pending or grant applications that are pending, and so it's time-sensitive, and we need to move forward with that. The readings for the first reading, ordinances for first reading, are those that we're reading for the first time tonight. So, you'll notice that council members will introduce and give a brief bit of background information about them. So, the first one is an ordinance for third reading, 318, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for bridge painting on US 50 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I make a motion to approve 0318.
Second.
Just a short definition of this one. It is a project that ODOT is doing within city limits. This is a bridge that is in that Richland Avenue coats-run area. It's going to be repainted, and they would just like to have our blessing on their project. And this will cost the city nothing.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 418 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for landslide repair on US 50 and declaring an emergency, introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0418.
Second.
And this is similar to the one above it, but this is a land slip that is in the far east side, and will probably be worked on this year, and it is on Route 50, once again within the city limits. ODOT is doing the work, and this will cost us nothing.
We have a motion and second for approval of 418. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 518 is an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant, introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve 0518.
Second.
This is for Jesse Schmitzer's position, where she is the Mobility Manager for HAPCAP, and this is for $7,500. We approve this amount every year. This is actually for 2019. ODOT has changed their rules on this, and they need to have the funding in place by March 1st. So, that's why we're talking about it in February.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 518. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 618 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of three buses and a truck for the Athens Transit System and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve 0618.
Second.
And once again, this is for the three buses that do the summit run, and so these are being sold to, oh, boy, I'm blanking on the...
Athens Public Transit.
Yes, thank you, Athens Public Transit, who is making a break from their contracts, and now they're going to be handling everything themselves. And this, at $30,000, three buses, it is a bargain, and one additional pickup truck for $250. I'd also like to mention that they have a fund that will actually purchase this. We're not authorizing a spending of additional $30,250. What we need to think about in the future is that we will be licensing these, so there will be additional costs and fees, but I think it far outweighs the acquisition of this asset.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 618. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 718 is an ordinance affirming the plan of operation and governance for the SOPEC electricity aggregation program and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by all members of council. And I can give a little bit of background information on it, and then I'll ask for a council member to go ahead and make the motion. What this is, is that we do have an electric aggregation program, but realize that we did not have the actual text of the plan of operation and governance included with our aggregation agreement. So, what this ordinance is doing now is incorporating this text so that we have it as an official part of our program. And so I would entertain a motion.
I motion that we adopt 718.
Second.
For all the reasons that you just stated. Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 718. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 918 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.06, Intoxicating Liquors, Narcotics, Section 9.06.1.12, Hallucinogen, Possession or Use Unlawful, and Section 9.06.1.5, Drug Abuse. This is introduced by all members of council.
I'll speak to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance, I will, first of all, let me make a motion to adopt 918.
Second.
We discussed this in committee, and it's been before council for a while. This began with the Citizens Initiative in November 7, 2017, which was passed by a majority of the electorate. What this does is codify and put into our various sections and modifies and make amendments, which we all have on our, described, you can see there, to bring our code up to date, make it meet the initiative.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 918. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance, motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1018 is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Council Member Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 1018.
Second.
Again, this has been discussed. This is a normal amendment of our appropriation ordinance to take care of various appropriations and expenditures.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1018. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1118 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development revolving loan fund administration agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Council Member Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 1118.
Second.
Would the mayor care to add anything that we don't already have, or...
Would you like to speak on anything?
Sure.
Sir, to the mic.
With the mic, that would be helpful. And if you could let us know your name, please, and sure, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Crippen. I work with Hocking Athens Perry, Community Action, a nonprofit in Gloucester, Ohio. Our agency administers various federally-funded programs and state-funded programs for jurisdictions such as the city of Athens, and I do believe this is most likely the state requiring the city to renew its agreement with the state to administer the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1118. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1218 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant and is introduced by Council Member Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1218.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, this is routine efforts by the Public Works Office, so this authorizes the City Service Safety Director to expend up to $200,000 from the water fund. Thank you.
We have an ordinance, excuse me, a motion and second for approval of the ordinance. All those, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1318 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a new backhoe for the Department of Engineering and Public Works and disposal of the current backhoe as a trade-in. This is introduced by Council Member Butler.
Thank you, President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 13-18. Second. Thank you. Again, this is an update on old equipment. There's a request from the Public Works Department, which would then permit the City Service Safety Director to authorize the purchase of a new backhoe, with the price being listed at $123,000. Funding would come from the water fund, the sewer fund, and the storm water fund. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1318. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
We now have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 818 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 49, Initiative Petitions, introduced by all members of council. Ordinance 1418 is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect an opt-out community solar program in the city of Athens through the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as SOPEC, charge SOPEC retail electric customers in the city an electric carbon fee, directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by all members of council.
I believe that should be suspended.
And it does need to be suspended. Okay.
I move that we suspend this particular ordinance, because I'm sure that we have to get everything in for the ballot.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, and what this is doing is authorizing the City Council to have the city place this on the ballot for a May primary, for consideration by the citizens of Athens. All right, any other comments or questions? And yes, Mayor Patterson?
Just in real brief, because this was discussed a lot, but just as a reminder, this is a two-mil carbon fee that would be no different than a service fee or administration fee that would show up on your utility bill, but it would be for solar projects in the city of Athens, in particular on the mercantile accounts, which are our city buildings, which in turn, if you think about it, if we drive down cost, electric cost, because we're using solar, the savings then for the taxpayer dollars and what we end up having to pay for energy costs drops as well.
Okay. Right. So, we now have a motion and second to suspend the rules, and we've had an explanation of this. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Council Member Fall.
I move that we adopt, whatever name, 11...
1418.
1418, okay.
Second.
I think that because this is putting it on to the voters, it makes sense. I think that one part of it is doing our responsibility as a city that's very interested in sustainability, and it's also looking at it as a way of making our area that much more resilient to problems down the pike, so to speak. And it also is like an economic development tool, that we can help sustain people in our region with alternative energies. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1418. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1618 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to address non-point source storm water pollution grant funds through the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and if awarded, enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio EPA and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. If we're fortunate enough to be recipients, the city would commit approximately 40% to match grant funds. It would authorize the mayor to submit the application, and again, as noted, it would address non-point source storm water pollution, and again, working with the EPA and cooperatively with the Ohio EPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1718 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city program funds for program year 2018 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. This is a small city grant that Andy Stone is, from Engineer Stone, seeking to apply for, and this is for West Union safety enhancements in that West Union corridor.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 1818 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for a recreational trails program grant for the Columbus Road Bike Pass Spur Trailhead and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 01818, and the reason for that is the recreational trails program application is due, and so we need to get it in as soon as we can.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules for ordinance 1818. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Council Member Kotzis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01818.
Second.
And just a little bit of background, basically, we had already approved this project to pursue a Clean Ohio Trails grant, and we found out that since it is a trailhead, which is the Columbus Road Gas Station, 93 Columbus Road, we found, I'm sorry, 83, my mistake, I'm sorry, that it is, it does not qualify for the Clean Ohio Trails Fund. So, we were suggested to apply for an RTP, recreational trails program. So, we're basically just shifting gears and applying for the same thing through a different pot of money.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1818. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Patterson?
Just to remind the public, what we're looking to do is to create a parklet area down there as part of the trailhead, a recreational space where there'll be some parking and possibly a pull-in for the Athens Public Transit. a recreational space where there'll be some parking and possibly a pull-in for the Athens Public Transit to drop off people or pick them up.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 1818. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1918 is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 1918.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that in part of this ordinance, we have some bills that are overdue and need to be paid. The Armory Electric Bill, and we owe you some refund. And we need to find out the final bills for the McKinley Project.
We have a motion and second for suspending the rules on ordinance 1918. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. I hereby make a motion that we adopt 1918.
Second.
Being an appropriate ordinance, please let me read it before we vote. Section 1 of the 2018 Appropriation Ordinance 15017 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $1,618 to General Fund Police, 101207 TC 500 for purchase of computer; $3,450 to Parking Enforcement Fund, 101718 TC 600 for parking refund; $8,331 to Street Rehabilitation Fund, 572 TC 500 to pay the final bill on the McKinley Avenue Extension Project, Project Number 302; $2,000 to Armory Hudson Fund, 582 TC 300 to pay electric bills; and $4,412,587 to Water Plant Fund, 740637 TC 500 pursuant to ordinance 11317 for the water treatment plant facilities improvement, Project Number 307, and increase in the total appropriations by said amount.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of this appropriation ordinance. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have a one reading resolution. This is Resolution 218, a resolution opposing the construction of an onsite waste disposal facility at the U.S. Department of Energy's Portsmouth Gaseous Diffusion Plant in Piketon, Ohio, introduced by all members of council. And Councilmember Fall. We do have, are you wanting to defer to our Piketon representatives first? We do have the mayor of Piketon and also two council members, Mayor Billy Spencer and Councilmember Foreman and Jennifer, your last name?
Chandler.
Chandler, thank you. I should know it by now. And if you would like to come, if any of you would like to come and speak to some of the details of the reason for this resolution? And when you get to the podium, if you could just give us your name so we have it for the camera, and then we'll allow you three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Billy Spencer, I'm the mayor of the Village of Piketon. Madam President, mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak. This is really a, we took on this as a David versus Goliath fight that we're into here. We've always supported the Gaseous Diffusion Plant and the ACP Plant, now which the Department of Energy is closing both facilities down and they're decommissioning and decontaminating the Gaseous Diffusion Plant. The plans that they have is to bury this in a 100-acre waste disposal cell. We call it a nuclear dump. And we oppose this. You know, we've always supported the Department of Energy and the contractor at the site, but we very strongly oppose this. It's going to, we're sure it's going to hurt our property values. And they have no commitment, we have no commitment from the Department of Energy to clean up the site already of the existing landfills and plumes of contaminated chemicals that are underground and migrating off-site as we speak. We can't get a commitment from them to clean this up. The whole idea of this was to create a site for future redevelopment, for jobs. And if they don't clean this site up with the addition of this 100-acre cell, it's a, who are they kidding that anybody would ever come there and create any kind of jobs? So besides that, and I won't take up much time, I know Jennifer and Dennis probably have some more scientific details than I have, but I just want to say we're here to ask for your support. You guys have a bigger voice than we do, although we have garnered some support, and I'll just go over that real quick. The Waverly, Silk, and Soda Townships, those are the two townships that the plant actually sets in. Piketon is in Silk Township. The Soda Valley School Board, which is Piketon. The city of Chillicothe recently passed a resolution to support the Village of Kingston, the Jackson City Schools. Pike County Health Department has come out in support of the Village of Piketon and opposing the, and Pike County office holders. So we're asking that you help us. And if you do pass this resolution, to be vocal in your opposition. We wear our state senators, I mean Portman and Brown, we wear them out, you know, we really do, and the citizens are. And we ask that you help us with that. So I thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time tonight.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Chandler. I'm on council with the Village of Piketon. I want to thank you all for reviewing the information that was provided to you by the Village of Piketon and for considering passing this resolution to oppose the construction of an onsite disposal cell in Piketon. We don't believe this is a good site for low-level radioactive hazardous and toxic waste. The Village of Piketon conducted an independent assessment of DOE's own data, where it was revealed that there are fractures underlying the location that this landfill is going to be built on, and also discovered that the Department of Energy incorrectly stated to the public that there were no fractures. The site also cannot meet solid waste siting criteria that they put in place for your normal household waste. And the site also cannot meet the 50-foot separation requirement between groundwater and the landfill liner that's required by the Toxic Substances Control Act, or TOSCA. This landfill should have been a nonstarter from the very beginning. I do want to explain to you why we think that it is not in the best interest of Southern Ohio to have this landfill built here by comparing it to a disposal site in Nevada. So in Nevada, the distance to groundwater is 770 feet. In Piketon, it's 21 feet to 97 feet. In Nevada, it rains four inches in a year. And in Piketon, it rains between 42 inches and 54 inches per year. The distance to a resident from the open, existing permitted landfill in Nevada is about 20, 26 miles. The distance to a resident in Piketon from this landfill is 1,007 feet. So as of today, it seems that our federal delegation is comfortable with forcing nuclear waste onto a community who has clearly stated that we don't want it. And we've stated that by passing official instruments like these resolutions unanimously by the bodies. I've provided that to you all, copies of those. Our federal delegation also doesn't seem to mind at all that the community was lied to about the fractures in the bedrock. This type of waste does not belong east of the Mississippi, and the risks to our future are too great. So I want to thank you for supporting our community by opposing the construction of an onsite disposal cell in Piketon and helping us look out for our future and our futures' future. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Dennis Foreman. I'm, it'll be my third term on council, on village council in Piketon. And I've never been nervous before. I speak, I'm a teacher, eighth grade science teacher, and now I'm in front of you guys because I read from bike owners to artists to sustainable living. I hear all the things you're doing, you're playing the harp. All these things, you guys, I research all of you. You two in Portland, the city of roses, I've been there. I love to travel. So you guys are making me nervous, because usually I'm not nervous. I'll be here at the science fair on March 24th. Dr. Tong is a good friend of mine, started the Wives for Women, because there's an imbalance. There's an imbalance in Piketon. We're a small village. When I first attended Chillicothe Council meeting, they said, "Why are you here?" I said, "What are you famous for?" And it's Tecumseh, the outdoor drama. Tecumseh went to the other villages because it was small and they needed the people to come together for a good cause. And that's why I'm here for you, too, because we are a small village. You're talking about a small village of, you know, maybe 2,500 people. We're a small village that's done great things for the United States. We've never asked for a thing. And by not asking for a thing, they didn't give us anything, because when I travel, other places have national laboratories, STEM education, which I've taken classes to you guys because of my school. And I'm like, there's money there for STEM education for our children in Southern Ohio. We're being ignored. I'm also the current chairman of future use of the site-specific advisory board. The acronyms, you'll get lots of them from us, is the SSAB. Every site, nuclear site, has one of these, and I don't know how they put me on the board, but I'm the chairman of future use. So I ask lots of questions. What is the future use? Well, some reason, some people believe they said if they cleaned this up, that they would reindustrialization would happen. We got to ask the next question. Who's going to reindustrialize it? They said, "Well, you." And I wrote down some notes when I'm sitting here listening to you guys. We have the same problem as you do. I talked to the mayor on the way up here, I was like, "Mayor, we just paved, there's potholes in our new paving." We can't hardly afford to fill the potholes. Chillicothe can't either. I went through their meetings, I heard the same thing. That's a lot of money for small communities like this. We don't have a thriving business thing. We're talking about a 4,000-acre piece of ground that's decommissioned and jobs being gone. So we don't have that money. So I'm like, how are we going to reindustrialize a nuclear site? I mean, Elon Musk is not driving to Piketon to help us out. So we've given everything we've had, also the SSAB, they told us, in the documents there, I can show you the documents, they're all public, fractures down to 20 feet. That's misleading. So if you're going to mislead the board over here and the public in here, we cannot do that as a Athens council. We can't do that as a Village of Piketon. And these students sitting out here, and the Boy Scouts, was I was a member of a troop, and I played in National Janerry Boys, please attend in West Virginia. We can't mislead people. If we do, we get called out, and rightfully so. If I'm wrong, call me out. There's one thing I will do, I'll admit it. But I'm telling you what, I really appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to come up here to, you know, this great place, because when I was a kid, our dream as Piketon kids, like her daughter and her sons, is to get to go to the convo. And I played in Houston near town. I saved Brew Fest one year because your electric went out, we brought all the Chillicothe ice. We emptied all the ice trays, and I brought a generator to make sure it played. But besides that, guys, on a serious note, thank you so much for your time, because we feel, you know, I'm a teacher, and we're doing this on our own time. And I just feel like people deserve to be respected and listened to, and we're getting so many people listening to us, and the facts keep coming in. And when I travel to other sites and other cities, and they have so much, and we have so little, shame on the government for overlooking us. That's not right. We are a Buckeyes, just like everyone, so I thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Fall.
I move that we adopt Resolution 0218.
Second.
I'm just going to read a couple with, given your great background on it, I'm going to skip over most of the whereas's. People do ask sometimes why we pass resolutions. We passed several of them last year. We are already on two, it's only February. That's because that's one way we have a voice in the process and the governance of our city. We have noticed that the erosion of home rule, I'm the home rule honey here, and every, this is another example of the powers that be from the state on up to the federal level of ignoring the people who are in the community. They do that with opioids, they do that with ecumenic development. We feel the pain of Piketon because we're the ground zero for injection wells. Those are not even looked at because they're exempt from several federal rules. So we understand. So I want to read one whereas, and then I'll go and do the what-for's, whereas's and what-for's. Whereas, "The City Council of Athens, Ohio represents the people of Athens and serves the stewards of the larger southern Ohio region. This council concludes that it is not in the best interest of the southern Ohio region, of which Athens is a part, to oppose the onsite nuclear waste disposal facility." We're, we all have connections with the water. And we also understand about vulnerability to water sources. We have a very shallow aquifer, so we understand that. So now therefore be it resolved by the city of Athens. Athens City Council hereby opposes the construction of an onsite waste nuclear facility in the U.S. Department of Energy's Portsmouth Gaseous Diffusion Plant in Piketon, Ohio. Athens City Council hereby supports offsite disposal because the DOE has not met the conditions through an enforceable agreement on the SSAB. And the DOE has failed to implement an acceptable stringent numerical and administrative waste acceptance criteria. Athens City Council hereby supports reopening the records of decision to accomplish the objectives of consolidating landfills and plumes within perimeter road and leaving landfill, leaving land within the perimeter road in a suitable condition for redevelopment. Athens City Council implores the DOE to preserve all current PORTS jobs, even if repurposing occurs. As representatives of the Athens community and protectors of the environment and health and safety of the people of southern Ohio, this council strongly rejects the construction of onsite waste disposal facility at the DOE Portsmouth Gaseous Diffusion Plant in Piketon, Ohio." Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of this resolution. And do we have any comments? Yeah, I'll get the mayor, and any comments from council members? Councilmember McGee?
I just wanted to thank our colleagues from Piketon for bringing this to our attention and to the attention of the citizens of Athens. And I know resolutions are easy to pass, and in some ways, people consider them just words, but I hope that citizens who are watching this on TV will conceive of this as a call to action, that we really need to be taking more steps, more serious action for many things. So again, I would thank you for appearing.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Sim, I want to echo the words of Councilmember McGee, as well as to thank Councilmember Fall for bringing this to our attention here, as well as our illustrious colleagues that traveled east to meet with us this evening. This is serious, and we have an obligation to acknowledge when there's a wrongdoing. So I applaud this effort. I would also kindly ask that our clerk make sure that we send copies of this resolution to the appropriate elected officials that need to see this. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson.
You know, I think there's one metric in this email that came from Councilmember Chandler that also needs to be brought to the fore. And that is that this particular site will be 8,000 feet away from a public school. So where school, where children are going to get, receive their education, if this nuclear dump goes forward, those kids are going to be susceptible to whatever happens. I really appreciate Mayor Spencer, as well as Councilmembers Chandler and Foreman, for coming, it's an hour and a half drive, to get up here to Athens, to come before us tonight, so I allowed you for that. I appreciate you coming. And again, I am in full support of council's resolution on having this happen. And again, to echo what council has said tonight, I just become so distraught over how southeastern Ohio has been targeted to become the toilet, the waste dump, for a lot of toxic materials, whether it's fracking waste or now, you know, a nuclear disposal site on a place that has as much rainfall as it does in comparison to Nevada, or a water table that's as high as it is in comparison to Nevada. So as mayor of the city of Athens, Mayor Spencer, I am with you 100%, council members in your council, please share that when you get home. I support this resolution, council.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and second for approval of Resolution 218. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for your presence. Okay. We're going to now move on to announcements and other business. We have three business items, of which I'm aware. The first one, Mr. Crippen, are you wanting to speak to us tonight? Why don't we let you speak first?
Good evening, everyone, again. My name is Glenn Crippen with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action here in Athens County. Council and mayor, thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you this evening and provide information. Basically, we'd like to pass along some information that the state of Ohio has, has put out to the state. Basically, I wanted to let the city know that on January 9th, a notice of funding availability was announced by the Ohio Development Services Agency in regards to the CHIP program, which is our housing improvement program in the county. They made us aware that $19 million would be available statewide to apply for in program year 2018. Typically, in the past, the city has partnered with the county to form a partnership to apply for the funding. This allows the city to ask for a little more money. Basically, a partnership is incentivized by allowing the city to request $50,000 additional dollars, as it would be if it were going it alone, so to speak. So in a sense, the city is eligible to join the county again to form a partnership for the CHIP program if it so desires. I have met with the county last week, and they would like to move forward, and they are interested in forming a partnership once again. This is a two-year program, and it's, we'll be applying for over $1 million if we do form a partnership. The other eligible jurisdiction will be the city of Nelsonville. I'll be speaking with them a week from this evening to solicit their interest in forming partnership with the county once again. Also, I wanted to let the city know that the application to write the grant has been completely rewritten, so we are continuing to evolve our process of applying for the funds. We'll have to go through a planning phase where we solicit input from stakeholders, housing providers, and basically the public sector as it pertains to the affordable housing needs of the city of Athens. So that's something we'll be looking to do later, early in March to mid-March, perhaps. And basically, there's no authorizing legislation that's needed from the city other than for us to, to enter into partnership with the county. And if the city is interested in pursuing the CHIP program again with the city, or I'm sorry, with the county, we can start that process now, and I will be back throughout the spring here, or late winter, if you will, to organize the program and take input and get our necessary documents completed and business taken care of. So that's the reason I'm here this evening, and that's all. Does anyone have any questions about the CHIP program, which stands for Community Housing Impact and Preservation? This is a federally funded program. Households that are at 80% of the area median income are eligible for assistance, and this is considered to be low to moderate income in the community, so.
Just one question. Is this only for refurbishing homes, or is it actually for building them as well?
Good question. Sorry, I haven't mentioned that previously. This service, or this grant is for the rehabilitation of homes and home repair. There are other activities such as tenant-based rental assistance as well, and we can look at those activities in our planning phase and see what best suits us and what our needs are. I think it's most important to identify our gaps in service and see what, see what the CHIP program offers as it compares to the gaps that are here in the community as far as affordable housing goes, so. But yes, home rehabilitation and home repair, down payment assistance and new home construction in partnership with Habitat for Humanity is often an activity we pursue as well.
Yeah. Mayor Patterson?
Yes. So the amount for the city of Athens has decreased by $50,000 this year as well?
That's correct. Yes, the funding continues to be decreased as far as the amount we can apply for. I do believe it's the state's intentions to spread the money out amongst more grandees in the state. We'll see. But essentially, five years ago, we could apply for $500,000, now we can apply for $350,000, so it just continues to decrease. But, you know, we, we've been lucky to be funded every two years, every time the cycle comes available, we're lucky enough to be funded. So we're doing all that we can with the funding that's available to us, so.
Thank you.
So for the city of Athens, in the last go, administration was $48,000, owner rehab was $127,400, owner home repair was $179,600, and then there was a rental rehab one, and that was $40,000 or $45,000, for a total of $400,000. So again, it would be a drawdown of $50,000 this go, but we spread it around.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending tonight.
Thank you for having me. Have a great evening.
Okay. We'll now come to the item that Councilmember Kotzis mentioned earlier, as he amended the agenda to remove from the table Ordinance 218.
Yes, President. Nicely, I would like to make a motion to remove Ordinance 0218 from the table.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for removing this ordinance from the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. The item has been removed.
Can we just, just clarify, this is the, the, the street closure for the International Street Fair, and, and administration has, has struck a compromise, can I call that? Can I, can I lean on administration to kind of bring up the details?
It was a negotiation. It landed well. If you want to expound a little bit upon that, I'd be happy to. In working with Diane Cahill at Ohio University, to look to see what was the, the most appropriate place to put the International Street Fest, given that that's a mom's weekend, and we've heard from several business owners on the Court Street corridor in the uptown area who feel like they would be negatively impacted by having a competing event on Court Street, not to mention a street closure again and loss of parking spaces and things of that nature. So where we've landed is that the street closure that will take place is from Court Street, this is East Union, Court Street to University Terrace. We will have to close off College Street, however, it will be at College and East Union, therefore, open to local traffic as well as parking in that area. The procession of the flags, what we'll do is have a parade permit that's issued so they can parade up South Court Street from Baker Center and, and then turn right on to East Union and have the event there, and they'll also look to use Howard Square as part of their venue for the International Street Festival. I've spoken to some of the business owners in the uptown area with this, and they felt very comfortable with this and felt this was a good solution as opposed to closing down two sections of Court Street all the way to Washington Street and impacting, again, their businesses on this heavily mother, mom-heavy weekend that'll take place during mom's weekend.
So let me ask a question of the two of you. Are you ready to amend tonight? Because what you're amending is the description of the ordinance to reflect that closure between Court and University Terrace on West Union. So you couldn't move to amend and have it read for the first time if you so choose tonight? I mean, if it's settled.
It's settled. Administration's end it's settled.
And we would have a second reading of the ordinance so that if there was further additional public comment, there would be an opportunity for, for the public to come.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to amend Resolution, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ordinance 0218.
Okay. And, and the only change we're making at this point is that the, the closure of the streets then on West Union between Court and University Terrace. And I think there are two bullet points under Section 1 that describe that, so we would incorporate it into both of those paragraphs. Is there, so we have a motion, and did we get a second? Okay, so we have a motion and second. Is there any other discussion, comments, or questions on the amendment? On the amendment? Yes. Councilmember McGee?
Just if we could let the public know the date of the amendment. I know it was.
April 7th. April 7th.
April 7th.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and second for amending Ordinance 218. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. The last item that I have right now for announcements and other business is an appointment of a person, a citizen, to the Arts Parks and Recreation Board, the Advisory Committee, which I believe Councilmember Butler has.
Thank you, yes, President. Nicely, I'd like to make a motion at this moment to approve the appointment of Mr. Travis Gatling to the Arts Parks and Recreation Board. I believe that we, councilmembers should have a copy of his CV, resume. Thank you.
Okay. And did we get a second on it? If we do, have a second. So we have a motion and second for approval of the appointment of Travis Gatling to the Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President. If I may also, I want to apologize to those out in TV land. I did receive a text that we were experiencing some difficulties earlier in the, in the meeting. There was a cable feed in the control room that wasn't working right. I was able to text Mr. Scott Thompson, who then went into the control room, was able to tackle it, and the feed at home in TV world is better now. So thank you, everyone, that assisted us in that process. And again, thank you, Scott, as well.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Well, we have committee meetings next week. Committees that need to meet?
Finance, personnel.
Finance and personnel. Maybe planning and development? Okay.
Likely.
City service safety, mayor, do you know?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. City service safety?
What about transportation?
Transportation, always.
Just put me down for the rest of the year.
Full agenda then for the committees. Any other announcements?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay. We always, at this point, have an opportunity for other citizens to speak on agenda items that were not, or for items that were not covered on the agenda this evening. And anybody who would want to speak can have up to three minutes. There's anybody? Okay. All right. In a moment, we'll be taking a vote to go into executive session. It's approximately 8:02, and what I'm proposing is, since we have a lot of guests here tonight, the scouts, the journalism class, and also the People Power Group, that we will go into that executive session at eight, at the very latest, at 8:20. So that'll give us a little over 15 minutes for people to ask questions. What we do is we go into executive session, we'll take a motion for that in just a moment, then we do come out of that executive session and then open the doors and then have a motion to adjourn after the executive session is over. So I would entertain a motion.
I move that we go into executive session for reasons of compensation, compensation of a public employee with the mayor, all city council members, president, and law director. I don't see cap.
No. Okay. All right. So we have that motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. For moving into executive session, and we do take a roll call vote, so Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Member Reisner?
Aye.
Member Crowe?
Aye.
Member Fall?
Aye.
Member Kotzis?
Aye.
Member McGee?
Aye.
And Member Grace?
Aye.
Okay. So we have 8:03 now, we'll have until 8:20 for people to come and ask questions if you'd like, or just have discussion with us. Thank you.